Hello?
Hi.
Hi, you're on the air and we haven't started, we're gonna start right now.
Alright.
Good evening, everyone, I'd like to call this regular meeting of council to order. First item on our agenda is the public input period if there's anyone that wishes to address council at this time with the matter of urgency. You have a few minutes of our time, please come forward, state your name, address, and your wisdom.
I know about wisdom, but good evening, our show, council and staff, I'm Christine Anderson, president of the Red Mountain Racers, and just wanted to give you just a really quick update if I could before your consideration of our proposal later this evening. So, since I was before you last, over the last four months, we've been in partnership with Red Mountain Resort trying to raise the funds needed to go forward with our athletes' training center. To date, we have, we believe, raised enough money for the first phase of the snowmaking installation, which is, as Jill was looking at the map earlier, it's the back trail and the T-bar school. As we've been going forward with our fundraising efforts, the, one of the updates is that the majority of the fundraising that we have done to date is in the form of loans. And as such, there will be obviously debt servicing involved in the proposal. So, we are continuing to, I won't take up much of your time, we're continuing to request that the use of the raw water from the city be at a very nominal fee, simply because in the first few years of operation, we just simply, especially with the debt servicing that we'll be facing, we just simply can't afford to be paying anything more than a nominal fee unfortunately. But, from what we've been told from staff, the, the cost of supplying raw water is minimal to non-existent. So, we're hoping that you can recognize the economic benefit that we anticipate this will bring to the community, to the local businesses, having additional races and, and with teams in town in the month of November, traditionally one of our slowest months, and the ability to host additional races. We've actually been successful this year in bidding on two large races, one in January and one in March, we've been awarded both of those. They're both six-day events, we've anticipated between five and six hundred people that will be in attendance for both of those events. So, we're very excited about that. The January race is however contingent on our having snowmaking.
There's such a problem.
So, that's, that's in a nutshell, and just wanted to say we greatly appreciate your consideration of this matter, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Christine. Is there anyone else that wishes to address council at the public input period?
Thank you, Richard. The, I'll be talking on the same issue that was just spoken to. On the agenda tonight, there's a recommendation from staff to enter into a five-year water use agreement to, for the Red Mountain Racers to draw water from the Center Star Goltz Reservoir. Problem is, you can't do it. The resolution that council adopted back in February, the council in principle supports the proposed facility as long as the request is compatible with the official community plan. Unfortunately, it's not. The, the issue was not addressed in the report from the corporate officer, but the official community plan by law 2425, which was adopted back in 2008, in section 27 and special planning areas, 27.1.1 says, "The Red Mountain area is defined by the special planning boundary is further regulated by the policies defined within the Red Mountain Consolidated Base Area Sector Plan, Schedule G, in addition to the general policies contained in the, within the official community plan." And Schedule G of the, these area sector plan, in section 8.3.7, and this is in section on Water Services, specifically states, "The city will not supply water for snowmaking." That's the official community plan. Council cannot provide water from the reservoirs to provide, to make snow on Red Mountain. I think there are, I understand that the consultants for Red Mountain Racers put a report together looking at feasibility for getting water from Star Goltz Reservoir, but to the best of my knowledge, council has not seen that report, and I don't know whether it contains any other alternatives. But I think there are some other potential alternatives that could be looked at. The first one that I can think of is the old mine pits on the back of Red, that are full of water, and the water's halfway up the mountain. It'll certainly reduce the pumping costs and the infrastructure costs of putting a pipe in all the way from the Center Star Reservoir. The other possibility is for a reservoir to be built up in the area where the tailings pond was for the old Red Mountain Mine. Certainly not on the, the tailings pond, but in the gully there somewhere, and use the water from Jumbo Creek that comes out of the basin on Granite Mountain. I believe that that stream runs year-round, and I don't know what the water licenses are on it, but it certainly is a possibility, and that a reservoir could be constructed in that gully or in some other area up there. Again, water's a lot closer to the top of the mountain than the Center Star Reservoir is, and reduce the pumping costs in the bottom half of the mountain could be just done by gravity feed. So, I think it would be useful if council did get a copy of that consultant's report and made it available to the public to see what the racers, what alternatives the racers actually looked at. And, but the bottom line is, right now, I, you can't proceed with entering into any agreement for snowmaking, because the, the Local Government Act, which says that all bylaws and enacted or works undertaken by council after the adoption of an official community plan must be consistent with the plan, so you're bound by what the constraints are in, in the OCP.
Great, thank you very much. Is there anyone else that wishes to address council at the public input period?
Just call on your lawyer, something. Oh, sorry, I was just, for the variance on the...
No, you're okay.
No, no, he wants to speak to it.
Yeah, he wants to speak to it.
Are you here to, are you here to hear the discussion on the variance, or are you here to speak?
Yeah, just to hear the discussion.
Thank you very much.
We don't know, we don't know if they want to say something, sometimes people do.
Okay, I need the motion to adopt the agenda, move by. Thatcher seconded by Moore. Discussion on the agenda, seeing none, all in favor. Opposed, motion is carried. Sorry, Jody, I forgot you were there, so pipe up.
Agreed.
Thank you. Motion to adopt the minutes, that the minutes of the regular meeting of council held on June 9, 2014 be adopted. Is there a mover? Moved by Spear, and seconded by Moore. Discussion on the minutes, seeing none, all in favor.
Agreed.
Four in favor, five in favor, all, motion is carried. Petitions and delegations, everywhere I go, there you are. Delegation for the Lower Columbia Initiatives Corporation, please come forward and present the way. Yeah, it's, it's up to you, like, for whatever angle you want.
Anyway, good evening, Mayor Granstrom, council and staff. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening about the future of economic development in our region. I'm just gonna be making some introductory comments before I turn the actual presentation over to Terry Van Horn. For those who don't know, my name is Mike Martin, and I'm here in capacity as the chair of the Lower Columbia Community Development Team Society, and represent both this organization and the Lower Columbia Initiatives Corporation. And Terry is the Economic Development Coordinator of the LCIC. And unfortunately, Don Thompson, Chair of the LCIC Board, could not be with us here today. So, we're here to provide some background to our upcoming request of the East End Services Committee of the Regional District to reinstate its support for economic development, for the economic development function in the Lower Columbia Region. We are approaching each of the area councils and electoral areas in the region. We met with Montrose last week, and we're actually a little bit of a roadshow today. We just met with the City of Trail a little bit earlier, followed by yourselves this evening, and on the way down, we'll be meeting with Warfield. So, we'll be, and we'll be speaking with the village, Fruitvale Village Council at their next scheduled meeting. So, we plan to meet with the East End Services Committee once we've been through the discussions of each of the individual councils. There's some urgency to this matter, as you can probably well understand, as we would like to get on with the process, and really what we're looking for is a commitment on the part of the East End Services Committee to allow for continuity of operation and planning. And we're hoping that through this presentation this evening, that you will support that initiative through your representative on the East End Services Committee. And you might ask, what are the key differences between what we've been supported in for the last three years and where we are today? And I could sum up the key differences is that the organization has seen some considerable, excuse me, some considerable efficiency improvements. We've generated some positive results, which Terry's gonna be sharing with you, and we now have another potential partner in the process. Now, we've had a couple of very constructive discussions with Neil Ruth of CBT, and we have CBT's provisional commitment to support the development of a multi-year agreement through a 20% financial contribution to the region. And naturally, there's gonna be some contractual requirements around that commitment, but there's nothing there today that indicates there's not a hurdle that we could not overcome. So, with that, what we'd like to do is review with you the plans going forward, and also answer any questions that you might have. So, Terry's gonna take us through the presentations.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks, everybody, for starting up some time for us. I am, I'm sad to say that this is the first time I've presented here today, and really, I guess maybe that's kind of an indication of perhaps we should have happened much more often. So, I'm glad I'm here now, and hopefully moving forward into the future that you guys will get sick of hearing me. Having said that, I just wanted to kind of talk about the original process, thinking of the LCIC, the LCCDT. Originally, all the communities in the Lower Columbia Region did things on their own. There was no regional focus, the reverses were very limited, and the LCCDTS realized that this wasn't working efficiently, and hence created the LCIC. I think this is the wrong presentation. Sorry, I think this is the wrong presentation. Oh, no, okay, that's good. Okay. So, the LCCDT, although it's been, it was only really officially incorporated in 2009, we have been around since 2001, and it's, it's had at least thirty members of volunteers that are actively, very busy in the economic development arena. They were still busy creating these really great ideas, really great regional efforts, they had no way of implementing them, and hence they created the Lower Columbia Initiative. Basically, now we have a body that's been able to put out and do some of the initiatives that the LCCDTS perform. Some of the initiatives that we've been working on in the last three years, of course, the outlook and profile, that's resources, so we've been really busy about being able to have resources for the region. And again, I can't stress enough how this organization has really concentrated on being a regional economic development office, and how we have focused on initiatives that basically benefited the whole region, and we would like to continue that role and feel that the culmination of resources and combination of working collaboratively with all of the municipalities have really generated some great outputs. We created a BREE program, and I'm not gonna go through the list, but I do wanna talk about some of the really key successes that we did get out of here. And let's start with investments. We've worked really, really hard in trying to establish investments from outside of the region. We all know how beautiful and amazing it is here, and it's getting those people here to see how beautiful it is and then hopefully stay. We've done a couple of strategic investment initiatives, one of them is the Invest Cooney. We became members this year and it's had huge success, and some of the successes you'll see up there. The Sunshine Cafe, although it didn't officially get sold, there was an offer put on and some work, a lot of work done, it didn't work out, but it was a key initiative that through the LCIC office that that partnership was created. I'm really proud to say that the Beaver Falls Motel just recently got sold, and that was right through the, right through the LCIC. And the, and the reason why I can say that is because when we originally started the business retention and expansion program, two years ago, we contacted the six hundred businesses in our region, we interviewed a hundred and fifty, and the interview process is a couple of hours, and we sat down and generated all of that information from those businesses. And when we joined Invest Cooney, I went back to those hundred and fifty interviews, and I went back by hand through all of them to find out all of the businesses who actually said that they were interested in selling the business in the next five years. And I personally contacted every one of those businesses, and there was about, I wanna say twenty-two, twenty-five people on that list, and said, "Hey, we've created this new investment opportunity called Invest Cooney, we're part of it, would you be interested in putting your business up?" Lot of those businesses weren't even officially for sale yet, and they said, "Okay, sure, no problem, we'll put it up, Terry." And the Beaver Falls Motel actually got up and was sold in two weeks. They never had a realtor, they never had anything, they were like, "What have you done, Terry? The phone has not stopped ringing." So, it was a huge success for something that they, you know, they participated in the BREE, and it was a, a key outcome of, of the work that came out of this office. Currently, right now, there is a trail business that has an offer through the, the Invest Cooney site, so we're pretty excited about that, we're hoping that that's going to go through. The Invest Cooney, it's really kind of a neat process, because all of the, all of the key commercial listings on that site actually get uploaded to the BC Opportunities site, and that business in trail that just got an offer on last week was actually from the BC Opportunities, from the Provincial Nominee Program, which is a provincial investment. And he said that we were one of the very few regions that came and presented, and I actually presented to him on our region, and he didn't, hadn't even heard of the region until I went to Vancouver and presented on the region, and why somebody should choose to invest in our region, and he changed his plans to come out here. I brought with me some opportunities and a nice little brochure for investment, and he was looking at it going, "This is great." Showed up last week, put an offer last week, so it's a key, key, direct relationship about the work that we've been doing with the Provincial Nominee Program, the BC Opportunities, and the Invest Cooney. The only other thing I wanted to talk about, I mean, we talked about the BREE project, again, how successful, I go back to that all the time. It took us a really long time to get this information. It took us, you know, really about a year and a half with us kind of trying to collect and gather, gather information, but once we started having that information, we use that now for everything we're doing for initiative planning, going back to the BREE project and saying, "What are the businesses asking from us? What do they need to be successful?" So, we're really using that information now. The, the one key thing I, we, I was talking about earlier today too, I mentioned that the BREE project and land inventory, we were pioneers, we were pilots in this entire Cooney region, not just the Lower Columbia Region. They didn't even have these projects in anywhere in our region, and actually, the RDI actually came on board after we started this project, recognizing the importance and the value of what we were doing, and now they've spread those projects throughout the basin, and our office is kind of like, we are the resource king for the BREE, they're phoning all, all the time, the different communities all over the Cooney's phone and going, "Hey, can you help us with this? Hey, how does that happen?"
So, Terry, it's Business Retention and Expansion Project, right?
Yes.
Just in case people didn't know.
Yeah, and so, both the land inventory...
And that's all the inventory and data and gathering?
The Business Retention, Expansion is a separate project than the Land Inventory.
Okay.
But, yes, so the, both of those projects, so the RDI is now rolled out into an entire basin-wide initiative, so we're pretty proud to be leaders in that aspect. And finally, the Work West Cooney Project, I dropped some of those out, I just wanted to mention, we won an award for that at the BC Economic Development Association. And to be frank, we were competing against a city that put $500,000 in the marketing campaign, and they saw the value, and we actually didn't win that category, but they actually created the category for us, because they saw the value in the work and what we were doing, and they were really impressed, so we're pretty proud of that, and we're planning on moving that forward and actually spreading out the initiative to the entire West Cooney's and not just the Lower Columbia Region. So, we have a lot of really exciting things. We were successful in raising $160,000 between the Lower Columbia Initiative and the LCCDTS in the last three years alone. So, we really are conscious about trying to leverage our funds. We, of course, created that new society for the affordable housing for a million dollars, we're really proud of that work, and that was, again, some of the work that was done on that committee, it's been far reaching out into the Okanagan, they've actually contacted and said, "This work is amazing, there's nowhere to be found in the province who's got this kind of information on their region." So, we're pretty proud to be, you know, again, pioneers and leaders in the work that we're doing. All because of collaboration, I think. Having a board that's so knowledgeable and experienced and from all the communities, the value that the board brings that is for free is phenomenal. You know that, we did a little roundtable at a board meeting, and it was over $50 million that these business people have invested, their company, their organization, in the last year in our region, that they see the value, and that they see the promise, and that the future is so great, and, you know, they're investing big money into their own organizations to be successful. To have that kind of knowledge and expertise and talent for free, they've all stepped up unbelievably, and Mike talked earlier about how we've taken changes in the organization, and we've tried to really streamline our processes, and the board have all stepped up and have areas of expertise that now are actually volunteering for things that normally boards wouldn't do. They're taking potential investors out to see something, if it's their area of expertise, and I have a list of all their expertise, and I'm phoning them up and saying, "Okay, somebody needs this," and so, they've really stepped up, so we're really proud to have such an amazing talented board, and we wanna continue that work, we wanna be the first point of contact, and we really are starting to make those strides. It's taken us three years, but we really are, the phone is ringing, and people are calling, and, "Oh, somebody needs something, phone Terry, phone the LCIC, phone Mike, somebody's gonna know something about how to help these people." So, these are the things we wanna continue with our efforts. This is a really great initiative that we've been working on, it's our sales and marketing plan, and on the bottom right, you see the front, communities, that stays empty, and every month, we're going to come up with a new metric, and this is about creating ambassadors in our own community, getting people really, really excited about our entire region, and how successful we are, and how thriving we are, and now that the summer's coming, and we all know that seventy percent of the people that move here actually visit first, we wanna be able to have some really cool metrics to share with the people who are coming to visit and who are coming to our region. So, it's like a good news story, and it's something that we'd love to carry on in the next five years moving forward, with different metrics to be able to create these wonderful ambassadors in our region. So, we have a plan. All said and done, we do have a plan. The first thing is that we've brought another partner to the table, and I think that's really imperative, like Mike mentioned earlier, having another partner recognizing the value of what we're doing and moving forward that is willing to invest in it, is a key, key plan. And this is a really great one, I know this has been kind of come up a few times, it would be one ask for both the LCIC and the LCCDTS. It's one ask, it's one ask for Economic Development Services, so nobody's coming back to you for anymore for the organization. And it's a five-year contract, as the municipalities are now rolling into their budget years and, and having to do the five-year plan, we thought it was a beautiful fit to be able to ask for a five-year contract, so that that gets put in the budgets with the municipalities going forward. And I talked about some of these really great successes we've had, those are all benefits, but some of the other obvious benefits is the established organization, the board's in place, the staff's in place, the office is there. We are trusted, we are, you know, we are, been, we have a proven track record now of some of the initiatives we're moving forward with, and we're, we're there, and we're open to do business. This is a great opportunity to demonstrate to everybody that we're all working collaboratively. I know we've heard many things regularly about everybody working together within the region, and this is a great opportunity for everybody in the region to say, "You know what? We are working together. We all support the Lower Columbia Initiative, that's a regional economic development office." So, I think it's a great tool to go back to everybody saying, "We're doing it together." And it's a great opportunity to leverage funding now that CBT has given the okay, when you're going out to look for funding for other projects, you know, it's great to be able to use CBT, that they're participating in something you're also participating in. So, what's it gonna cost? This is the City of Roslin. We're looking for $30,000 a year. Basically, it's gonna cost us $262,000 to do the operation, that's between the LCIC and the LCCDTS. The one thing I want you guys to look there is the project grant revenue. We recognize the importance of us to be able to go out and leverage funding as well, and so we said, "Okay, we have a job to do here as well. Not only are we going to provide this unbelievable value for service, but we're gonna go out, we're gonna get $25,000 of our own money too. We're gonna leverage the funding we get, and we're gonna work hard and try to get some more." So, recognizing that, it comes to $176,000 for East End Services Committees combined, and basically, that percentage, the 17.4% of it, is that taxation East End Services Committee percentage, so that was something that we didn't make up, that came right straight from the past percentage that the City of Roslin had contributed to the LCIC. And the bottom line is that we have this great organization, we have passionate people that are working and making positive outcomes, and if this has saved you, I have the numbers actually, compared to last time, this will save you at least $5,000 a year to the organization, and you get unbelievable service and one ask for Economic Development Service. So, we really encourage that the City of Roslin go back and improve when this comes up to, for vote at the East End Services Committee, we like to do this as a region. It only works if everybody's on board, and we'd really like to have your support. Does anybody have any questions?
Great, thanks very much, Terry. Are there any questions? Terry, yeah, go ahead.
Well, you actually answered my question right at the end, so thank you, but the whole business around leveraging, you know, that CBT funding you're gonna get and that percentage, and, you know, many of our conversations at financial planning time, budget time, were around our community service groups and how they need to be leveraging any funding and starting to become a little less dependent on the city. So, I'm happy to hear you say that, and I would hope that with such a vibrant group of people, of some I know and some I don't, that the, your organization would be taking any monies and leveraging, leveraging to the next degree to show us, if we agree, that the next year, you've made that money grow and grow, which, I mean, obviously, when you're an economic development office kind of organization or a development group, that you would probably, that's like a given, correct?
We have built into that budget, I don't know if you saw it, but $25,000 of grants...
Grant revenue, yeah.
But I think our past performance would indicate we could probably do better than that, like, we've, we've had some real success over the last three years.
We share is $50,000 from the businesses alone in our region for the Work West Cooney Project.
Right. So, is that showing anywhere in this? So is that shown anywhere in this?
Well, I think it said $160,000 was raised in the last three years, plus a $1 billion on-
Oh, okay. Okay. Yeah, great. So that was my only real question, and I really appreciate the details in the information that we've received and that, you know, some of us had meetings, et cetera, to really just bring us back to the fact-
Thank you.
House of More.
No, I'm okay.
Great. Thank you very much for the presentation. Much appreciated.
Thanks very much for your time. Appreciate it. I should just mention that that presentation that Terry put on is slightly different than the one that was in your package.
Yeah, that's what can make more interesting.
But you have these-
You can read it twice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, everybody good? Next item on the agenda is item 6A, a request for council's decision regarding athlete training center use of raw water as a motion that council instructs draft to draft a five-year water use agreement to allow Red Mountain Racers to draw raw water from Star Gulch for snowmaking and further resolve that Red Mountain Racers pay a flat fee for raw water of $1,000 for '14, '15, and the rate be increased by 250 year, five years. The agreement totaled $2,000 for the year 1920. Is there a move to that?
Make a different motion.
Some of-
Thank you. Seconded to that? To the original motion?
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion, councilor.
Well, you know, when we have public input and, you know, prior to having even this discussion, I myself would appreciate clarification around that, as in what Mr. Charlton brought up. And the other thing is that, you know, OCPs can be amended. I'm a little bit, you know, well, I like clarification around that information that he brought forth. And we did receive a report from the Red Mountain Racers Society. Whether it was made public or not, I don't know. With their information, alternatives to that snowmaking project, I don't think there were alternatives, and maybe there were, but not that I recall. So yes, we did receive information from them in a study, and no, I don't think there were alternatives in it. But I certainly need more clarification around this particular motion, for sure.
Great. Can we ask Ms. Butler, please?
Your word, Mr. Counselor. We have confirmed that Mr. Charlton is correct, and we do apologize for missing that. But Counselor Spierin is correct. It can be handled with an OCP amendment. So we could move forward with this motion contingent on the OCP amendment. But we can bring the amendment for first and second reading on July 14.
Good.
Yep. Thank you.
I just had the same concerns as Counselor Spierin. I'd like to, now that you've confirmed that, I think we should probably make an amendment to the OCP. Well, I think July 13 was the next meeting. I still think it's a good project. I think it would help the businesses in town for those slow months in November. And I think it's an excellent project. Our reservoir can handle the amount of water that they require that was brought forward in their report. So I think we should try to move ahead, try to help them out, and make an amendment to the OCP.
Thank you. Counselor Bloomey.
Well, I'm definitely in favor on being able to, I don't know, give the green light and let the project go forward. But of course, given that new information, provided that contingency debt is in there, we've already said that. And, you know, I'm not, just, I guess for the record, I'm not entirely happy with this $1,000 charge. It just seems kind of nominal and arbitrary. But given, you know, later details of actual contract and all that, if we take a look at what those words really say, that'll help me out with this. So definitely, as far as just today's issue, moving forward on it, I'd say we just keep going ahead.
Great. Thank you, Counselor.
Okay. I have a lot of things about this one.
Your word, just for instance. I didn't get to finish as making the motion, just so you know. I was only, as far as my speaking part, so.
Oh.
Sorry, I missed something.
Well, I said, I said my concerns, but I didn't get to speak to the actual resolution. So if you could just go to Counselor Moore and then come back to my appreciation.
I'll come back, no problem.
Yeah. Thank you.
I'm sure we'll have a bit of a discussion on this.
Yes, obviously.
First of all, I want to say I really support the concept and applaud the Red Mountain Racers for bringing it forward. I am disappointed that we didn't get more information from staff because when this came up in February, I had asked for a number of things, a number of questions that I thought we needed answered, and I was expecting that we would get a report that would address those things before we get to the point where we're talking about an actual agreement and the actual amount that we're looking to pay for water, to have them pay us for the water. So that does concern me. There was, what we did not get was the feasibility study. There was a feasibility study and an economic impact information, and we got sort of a summary of that. But I had asked to see the feasibility report, and we didn't see that. I'd also asked to see other examples of water use agreements that other municipalities use when there's snowmaking conditions, and we haven't seen any of those. I asked for information about other resorts, what they pay for snowmaking. I got one myself through a contact I have, but I wanted staff to bring forward things about that. There was a thing in the February report that said the city would do a design review of snowmaking infrastructure, and my thought on that was, well, we don't have the capacity to do that, so that's going to be us going out and hiring a consultant to do that. So there's an expense. Are we paying for that? Yes. We've seen no information about the recharge rates of our reservoirs. We've seen some figures about the amount of water that would be used for snowmaking. We have seen that. But, you know, I have a concern about, we're talking about drawing down our reservoir when they're already at pretty much their lowest, November, December is when we've used all the water that's come in through the freshet in the spring, and now, you know, we're doing this. We haven't had any discussion about whether snowmaking should be metered. I think it should. Even if we don't decide to charge a lot for it, we should know how much water is being used, and that way also, the user would know if there's leakage and maintain their own system, so to keep it efficient, right? You know, we're doing this, I can't remember what it's called, the cost analysis, water charge cost analysis going out to RFP, the, what is it called? The Water Smart Rate Setting thing. That consultant, whoever we use on that, should look at bulk water and what, I mean, you know, there's a, there's a real issue for me when someone tells me that there isn't a charge for raw water, there's no charge to the city. It's patently untrue because we have intakes, we spent hundreds of thousands of dollars redoing our intakes, we have to maintain the pump, you know, the mechanics there, we have to maintain the pipes that will take the water from the intakes to the reservoir, we have to maintain the reservoir, we have all kinds of charges, things that are expenses to the city, to the taxpayer of Roslyn, before we get to the water treatment plant, you know? Because, yes, everyone knows, oh, treat the water, you have a big charge. We have charges for those other things. You have charges to think about, when are we going to have to redo those intakes, right? When are we going to have to, I don't know, dredge the reservoirs or whatever all, you know, reservoir maintenance takes? I don't even know. Those things are charges. Those things are costs to the city, and those things should be calculated. We should know. Even if we decide that due to the economic development benefit of this particular project, we're not going to charge them what it might actually be worth, we need to know the benefit that we are, you know, giving. I mean, it's just responsible resource management, and I think we, you know, we definitely, we definitely need to do that. I had a bunch of questions on the ISL, the demand issues that were brought up in the ISL report, like where there's talk about 5,000 more people coming because we're able to make snow. We're going to have these 5,000 people, not all at once, granted, but it's going to increase the number of people who are putting demands on our water system. Well, the ISL report didn't address those extra people at all, right? They just used our population projections as they exist currently and what they're, you know, put out to be in the future. So, you know, talk about the capacity of Star Gulch, and now this, I have no idea, and perhaps, Mr. Mayor, you would know, but we've got, we say the capacity of Star Gulch is listed at 122,000 cubic meters. So is that based on a design spec or is that based on the capacity that Star Gulch has at this moment? I mean, don't they get silted up and lose their capacity as they age? I would think they would, but I don't know. But it wasn't addressed. The ISL report, it didn't say, at least I didn't see where it said whether it was addressing both Phase 1 and Phase 2, where they talk about the gallon per minute for snowmaking. From the conceptual design, I couldn't tell whether it was Phase 1, Phase 2, and it seems to be quite different, like 475 gallons per minute in each phase. So you're either looking at 475 or 950 gallons per minute. That's a huge difference. I'm thinking that ISL used the same conceptual design that we saw in this packet from Techno Alpine because it's dated May 2013, so it doesn't look like that's been updated, but that was a question. Table 2, that's in the ISL report, that talks about how they get to their demand, their water demand. On one place, it lists what we need for fire protection requirements, and then when they talk about what we need, they don't mention fire protection. It's not included in the calculation. And then I just had a basic question. It's like, I don't know, what's the rationale for using 100 days? Where does that come from? Is that based on what? I don't know. And is that the right number? I don't know. Right? So these are questions. Before I say I want to sign an agreement or even have staff draft an agreement, I think we have another step. And I thought we were going to get to this since this started in February. I thought we were going to get this sort of information long before we're sitting here in June, looking at agreeing in principle to $1,000 for water. Let me see. And then I'm concerned, too, the proposed agreement that we saw, it talked about a contract requiring, you know, that would have mutual consent. And you have to be really careful when you put mutual consent in on agreements because if the other party doesn't mutually consent to renegotiate, you're stuck with whatever deal you made. I just feel there's an awful lot of unknowns in this situation that we need to address before we get to that point. And I'm sorry it's taken so long because I totally support the concept. I want to see it go forward, but we have a responsibility to citizens of Roslyn to make sure that we're doing the right thing. There's also the other OCP issue besides the no water for snowmaking is that any removal, alteration, disruption, vegetation, or disturbance of soils requires a development permit. So that would just be something else that I would expect staff to address in a report. So what I was going to suggest was that before we move forward to this next step, we get some answers to the questions that I've just raised here. And just as a point of reference, and I am not saying this applies to us, but the other community that I talked to that pays for water, they pay $1,700 per million gallons of water that they use. In this proposal, it looks like we're looking to use 18 million gallons for this, so that's like $30,000. Now, their situation is different. They use treated water, it gets pumped to them. But just to give you an idea, there are, you know, there's a huge difference in what we're being asked to do and what other places are doing. And that said, we can support this as an economic development effort and not charge the full value of what the water is worth if we want to do that. But we need to know what the water is worth before we make that agreement.
Can I just ask who the 17 grand was for a million gallons of-
It's a ski resort called Spirit Mountain in Minnesota.
In Minnesota?
Yep.
Well, thank you very much. Counselor Spierin, first of all.
Well, yeah, I mean, there are some things that Counselor Moore has said that I concur with and agree with. I did feel, you know, that we had had a presentation from RED, that we'd agreed in principle. You know, we're all, have we had all the information that you wanted presented to us? No. Are we maybe satisfied that we can enter into an agreement? Well, we can't now anyway because it doesn't, the OCP says we can't do that at this point. You know, I'm obviously in favor of the initiative, and I think, I'm not going to speak for any other counselors, but I think that we all were pretty impressed by the presentation and the fact that there are numerous economic benefits to our community. We asked a lot of questions the time, the first time that RED came. Sorry for my raspy voice. I've been using it a lot. And, you know, we had an opportunity to ask questions about everything from, you know, whatever, snowmaking, you know, capacity or the amount of water they're going to use to, you know, noise and, you know, all that stuff. I don't know. In principle, I'm totally in favor of it. It's two weeks, another two weeks, so we can get some answers. Going to set them back? I don't know that question or that answer.
First, there may be an answer right there. Ms. Butler.
Yes, it's going to set them back, but as I said, we can do the first and second reading of the OCP on July 4th, public hearing on August 11th, and we can do third and fourth on August 11th.
So in the meantime, so you're saying that our July meeting that we-
July the 14th.
Okay.
Could be first and second reading and set the public hearing for August 11th.
Okay. So how, so what we need is, we need some of these questions addressed. I mean, I'm prepared to rescind my motion if that's what council thinks that we need to do at this point. Yeah, I mean, I don't have much else to say because I don't have answers to any of these questions, and I think that they do need to be answered. If they haven't been already through the report and through presentation, maybe it just needs to be reminded or where we need to look for the answers. But I'm certainly in favor of this going forward, so however that's going to happen, I'm in favor of it.
I think, if I can just, I think we can move ahead if council wishes to move ahead with this resolution, we can move ahead with this resolution. And for the OCP amendment, we could have answers for that for the public, so the public's made fully aware of the answers to questions that have been asked, so that we have the issue moving forward, go to the public, have the public make the decision on the OCP amendment, and at the same time have the Red Racers aware that we wish to move ahead. Counselor Bloomey, anything you want to add here?
Uh, no. I think it's, I mean, I recognize that there's a lot of questions, but that's our responsibility to find the answers before we go into the point of actually settling down the details in the coming weeks.
Okay. House of More.
I, in preparation for tonight, I did make this, I did have this paper that I could, basically what I just spoke to, all those questions, I could give that to everybody, and you could look at it because sometimes it's easier to read it than it is to hear it, you know? And you could look at that and see if these are questions that you want answered, and if they are, we could agree which questions we want staff to answer. Would that be a way to go?
We could certainly do that, but we're certainly not going to look at them now to make decisions, to read them right now.
No.
But I think what we could do is if we move ahead with this resolution, and we move ahead with an OCP amendment, then those questions can come to council, and those questions could be addressed in the staff report that goes along with the OCP amendment.
My only concern is that I feel like the motion as it stands now is, I don't feel comfortable moving forward that motion until I get some of these answers myself. You know, I just don't, I don't feel it's the responsible thing to do.
Okay, well, we do have a motion on tail.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just saying.
It's been seconded.
I'll just pass this around, you can-
Can you do it later? Let's just get to this motion. Yeah, this is three times.
So, you know, as far as, you know, the charge of $1,000 and, you know, I do agree with Counselor Moore that, you know, our infrastructure costs us money and our, you know, our public works, people who work on all of it, everything costs money. So I don't know where that number came up, other than it's sustainable perhaps for Red Racers for, you know, at least the first year. And I do want to have further discussion about looking out five years, too. So I am a little bit reluctant to pass the motion in that if we, I mean, I want staff to come back to us with an OCP amendment, but that's not contingent on us making the resolution as it sits in front of us right now.
But the OCP amendment-
Yes.
-would be the, what drives the initiative in the end. Because without the OCP amendment-
Yes, I understand that.
-this cannot go forward. So we can say that we wish to go forward with this resolution and with the OCP amendment until such time as we amend the OCP. And the OCP amendment would give every, give all the citizens of Roslyn the opportunity to speak to the amendment.
I understand that, correct. But where do all these questions get answered, the Counselor Moore?
That is what I just, I just said. When we get a report on the OCP amendment-
Yes.
-those questions will be in part of the report.
Yes.
And as Counselor Moore said, she can hand those, her sheet out to all of us, and we can all have a look at that.
Okay.
And that, those questions can be answered in the OCP amendment report.
Okay. Further? So further, what if, okay, I'm just a little bit nervous procedurally. So those questions are part of that report, but those questions, like, say there's three questions that we, you know, agree with, like, we'll go with the OCP report, but the other ones don't, so we're going to separate those questions out, you know what I mean?
No, I don't.
Okay, I'm not even sure what I mean.
Well, whatever, well, if I can clarify, whatever questions we feel should be answered by staff, we will ask staff to answer those questions in the report.
Right. But they won't, those questions won't be, anyway, let Counselor Moore go, I'm just going to think what I'm thinking.
Counselor Moore.
Okay, so the motion that's in front of us is asking staff to draft a five-year water use agreement, and to agree to an annual rate for five years. I feel that certainly the rate part is premature. I don't want to get into an agreement for five years right now without knowing some of the question, without knowing the answers to some of the questions I've asked. So regardless of what you say about the, and this doesn't, I mean, we're going to amend it to say, do an OCP amendment, or we're going to have a new motion about the OCP amendment, I don't know how you want to handle that. But I would like this to go forward, but I can't vote for this the way it is, because, you know, I just don't feel it's responsible for us to make an agreement, a five-year, to talk about a five-year agreement, when we don't know the cost, when we're talking about specific cost here for $1,000, whatever.
Well, I think the report answers some of the questions that you've just raised there, and I think that that can be, that can be addressed as we move forward, and the report specifically states that, that we discuss the five-year, and we make it so that it's amendable. I think what we're trying to do is give some certainty to Red Mountain Racers, that we have, that they have five years of water. The numbers can change, and that's in the report, I hope everyone's read it. And I think what we were, what we can do here is move ahead, Red Mountain Racers know that we're moving ahead, and amend the OCP as required. I think we can do that, I think we can do both at the same time.
This motion says we're committing to a fee agreement with them. That's the part that I'm uncomfortable with.
We can, but I think we can build into the fee agreement some way that we have input into it.
Why don't we just delete it?
Well, I think we have a motion on tail, I think we can, I think we can work with this resolution quite well. And that's what I read in the staff report, and I totally agree. Anything further? Yes, Ms. Butler?
Um...
Yeah, one sec. Ms. Butler?
Well, I was just going to suggest that we could amend the second part of the resolution to read that that be in draft into the agreement, so that, I mean, before the agreement is signed or approved by council, it could be the discussion again about the rate.
Yeah, but I mean, with that, to me, that was in the, in the report as well, and that's what it said.
That's the intent, the intent is that
That was the intent.
The agreement, until it comes back to council, that's why it reads for council consideration.
Thank you.
And that's the part.
And that's what it would be.
Well, then, the "and" further makes it a little more, you know...
Counselor, please. Counselor Bloom.
I didn't quite hear Tracy 100%, but I think it was probably the same point as the point I wanted to make, is that the actual wording of the agreement, so that we feel comfortable with the, you know, that dynamic of changing numbers, when we know the actual number we should make it, that that actually happens, that we can make that change, though that aspect comes in the actual wording of the actual contract, that will come to us in draft form before it's finalized. And so in my head, that's when we deal with that. Right now, we're just saying, yes, take the next step, we're not saying, do it all.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, and I call a question on the motion, all in favor. One, two, three, three in favor, Counselor Bloom?
I say yes, I say yes.
More in favor? Motion's carried. Do you want that known?
I don't care, I don't care. I mean, I'll just make one, no, let me just make one comment, because this is just clarity of language. If you're going to put forward a draft, the draft of the water use agreement is going to have multiple clauses, and things, and agreements, and all kinds of things. Fee is one of them, right? So when you say "and further," and then you specify the amount, you know, it just makes it look like you're actually agreeing to that amount. So it's just a little language thing.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Six B, request for counsel's decision, City of Roslyn.
Can I give these?
Well, you can, yeah, we can get them out to the meeting.
We have to make a motion for an amendment, the OCP?
No, that will come back, because we have to do that.
That'll be part of the report.
Okay. Roslyn Way Branning Project, a motion that counsel choose one of the four watermark options. Is there a mover to an option?
Yeah, just apply my page yet?
Come on.
Which is two, sorry, what?
Forty-five.
Sorry, forty-five?
Forty-five.
Yeah, for some reason, my computer, I'm sorry. It's, I know which one.
I'll make a motion.
Make it, while Jill's at her head.
Oh, she's very...
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion that we go with option two C.
Seconder? Any one second, two C?
Two C, oh, that's the one where it sticks up.
Well, I hate taking motions, but I think we should have it seconded for discussion.
Yes, I'll second it for discussion.
Thank you very much.
All right, sorry. Gee, something so beautiful as two C. Okay, so we've been through a process, quite a process, of trying to find the right watermark logo for Roslyn, and we looked, we looked at many, and, and of course, we took it back to Shelley Ackerman, and said, you know, it's not working, because it looks like a piano. And so with her great skills, she, and we talked about frames, et cetera. So the ones that are framed, I'll be honest, I don't like them as much, because they sit alone, and they're this little rectangle with, you know, the black and white image in it, and it doesn't flow together with the actual City of Roslyn words. And if you look at logos, and you look at other word marks, they're very, they're very subtle.
Better off.
Sorry, I never heard that sound before. They're very subtle in that they kind of flow together, and through all of this process, I kept going back to these two, two C and two D. And I know what the concern was with the church fire too high into the mountain, and I thought, well, what a connection for Roslyn, our spirituality is on the mountain. So that was my connection, I thought it was actually quite brilliant, but, so I like that one, and I like the way it flows, it's simple, the outlines of the buildings that we're familiar with, others may not, but they soon will learn to be, are there. And if that's not first option for counsel, then I think two D should be, and that's just bringing that fire down a little bit, and it's...
Let's deal with two C.
Okay, anyway, so that's my spiel.
Who seconded that? Oh, yeah.
I did, okay.
Reluctantly.
Well, no, I'm sorry, I was just finding, I was turning things around
Okay, sorry.
to the orientation. Two C is fine, I prefer two D, and not for the usual reason that I do, that I don't think church should be, you know, bigger than state, or whatever, but because actually, I think it, from a divine point of view, it's a little smoother, and it's a little, it flows a little better. So I like two D better.
Okay, Counselor Bloom.
I also prefer two D, actually, and it's not because of the steeple at all, well, except for the fact that it breaks the mountain line above it, and I think with that broken mountain line above it, it makes it less clear what we're talking about. We know what it is, because we see similar things all the time, but somebody from the outside, it just makes it harder to figure out what that's supposed to be. So, I mean, ultimately, I don't care what our logo looks like, because it's an identifier in our case, it's not like a marketing thing, in the sense of, nobody's going to, not to move to Roslyn, because they don't like the logo, right? So for us, it really doesn't matter what the logo looks like, it just has to identify us. So ultimately, I'm happy with what you guys choose. But since I'm being faced with choosing, I'm saying two D because of, yeah, just because that lines are broken. And then also, I kind of feel like, you know, I wouldn't, I'm curious to see the, the kind of thing that counsel should have been presented with, at least, you know, the eight or nine that was, that Facebook got seen, but, anyway.
That's, that's past the point, and we're discussing two C right now, and you vote against two C.
Correct.
I, thanks for pointing out the difference between two C and two D, I couldn't, I didn't know.
There you go.
I looked at those, I couldn't figure out what the difference was. Either two D or two C is fine, it, they're both nice, simple logo, it's got Red Mountain there, it's got our, the buildings that you distinguish in town, either or, I'm fine. Two D's, two D's probably a little, now that I see the differences, probably, I'd probably go for two D myself.
Okay, well...
Change your motion.
No, no, we're not going to.
We're done.
I personally like two C, just because the steeple's up there and does break up the mountain, and I think it flows better. But anyway, so I'm just going to call a question on two C, okay? Are you going to try and...
Well, I just want to say one thing about the font. If you look at two C, the City of is in black, and I know that can be changed out, right? Like, the color thing is not always the same, depending on what kind of correspondence or what it goes on, I think. But that's got the City of Roslyn, if you look, they are different, right? So City of Roslyn's one color on two D. I like the black City of with Roslyn in that, whatever that tone is called, that.
Okay, I'm going to, as this is, I'm trying to call the question, all in favor of two C.
Oh, I'm nervous, because I, I think I like the other one.
Don't be nervous, we need a motion. All in favor of two C? If you're not going to, no?
I'm going to go with two C.
Actually, you know what?
Three in favor?
I stand. You know what, I'm in, I'm in favor, what the heck?
More in favor?
At least they keep them closer.
Thank you. Counselor Moore?
No, I'm opposed.
Okay. Motion's carried. We have a very tall steeple now.
Heavenly little town.
Heavenly, that is, what did you call it? Shows our spirituality, that was well said.
Yeah, yeah, because you know what, I, you know, I would actually go to church, but I like to go skiing, and that's my spirituality.
Okay. We're moving on to seven A, development variance application, 2208 Elmore. Is there a motion that counsel approved, development variance permit application to vary the exterior side setback from three to zero, a three-meter variance? I'm not going to read the whole thing.
Yeah.
Located at 2208 Elmore. Move by Thatcher, seconded by Moore, discussion, Thatcher?
I would have a look at the garage there, it looks like it's almost falling down right now, so I think it'd be a good improvement to have something newer there.
Sorry, Counselor Moore?
I agree, total improvement, it'd be great.
Okay, anything further? Counselor Bloom?
No.
Okay, call the question, all in favor? That's...
In favor.
Thank you. Motion's carried. Maybe, maybe I can just speak, I know you wanted to speak, but we have, and I'm not going to allow you to, I'm sorry, but you could have spoken in public input period, or you could have made your stuff known in writing, but...
Oh, I didn't know that.
That's, that's the process.
Okay.
Thank you.
I thought it would be just part of the agenda, but, yeah, no, no problem, thank you, I had some photos in case you hadn't seen it, but yes.
No, we're all good.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Seven B, variance permit application, 1890 Plainer Crescent, motion that counsel approved the development variance permit to vary the front setback from four to .3, to 3.7, and increase driveway width from four to 6.1, for the building of two carport at 1809 Plainer, is there a mover to that? 1809 and 1890, we've got a...
Please hang up and try your call again. If you'd like assistance...
Apparently Counselor Bloom is away for a minute. So, we have two different numbers here, we have 1809 in the text, and we have 1890 in red heading.
1809, sorry about that.
I couldn't find, I couldn't find 1890.
So it's 1809 Plainer, is there a mover to that? Move by Moore, seconded by Thatcher, discussion, Moore?
Okay, well, I moved it, but I have a lot of questions about it.
Just one second.
Oh, yeah.
Counselor Bloom, are you there?
Yeah, I am.
Okay, perfect, we're just, you know where we're at, we're on seven B.
Yes, got it.
Okay, Counselor Moore?
Okay, I moved it, and, you know, I'm a big fan of infill development, but there were a lot of concerns that were brought up in the letters from Mr. Tal, and I'm so glad that our planner is here tonight, and can hopefully go through the letter and explain.
That's why the planner is here tonight?
That's right, I figured.
So did you want to, so I'll just get Ms. Lightburn to go through the letter, is that, you got it all done? Yeah, perfect, thank you.
So, the first part, where he says it doesn't, the existing property doesn't meet the existing bylaw for minimum lot size, that part of the bylaw applies for subdivision, not for an existing lot, because it already exists, that section doesn't, doesn't matter per se. So yes, it is smaller, but it's not in subdivision, it already exists. The parking, well, it is for parking, that is going to be two parking spaces on the property. Safety for pedestrians.
Could I back up one last question, where it says the dwelling appears to be designated for two suites?
Yeah, he had talked about having a home with a suite underneath, and that is still perhaps what he's looking for, either way, it still complies with the bylaw.
Still, okay.
It depends on the size for parking, so if he just had a single-family home above 70 square meters, then he would be required two parking spots as well. Or even if he has a, one, his home being under 70 square meters, and a secondary suite also under 70 square meters, it would also require two parking spaces. So either way, it requires two parking spaces.
But it fits zoning.
It fits zoning, that's permanent. Safety, we had walked aside, and Public Works Manager and I, and we had no issues with safety or crowding. He talks about the temporary renters and visitors, that's not the intent, he would have to apply for a rezoning to a guest house, if that was the intent. You have a question?
No, 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 I just, you know, that's, I would say that's a speculation, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Good.
Thank you.
Snow clearing was also the other issue brought up by the other neighbor. The Public Works Manager, my supplant, there's enough room on the boulevard between the driveway and the property, which is stored snow from the driveway, and snow from the carport is being stored on the roof.
Excuse me? The whole place is going to, is a whole snow load, is it not, like it's designed that way?
Yeah.
And I had, just have one question before we go further, Stacy, is, isn't that an odd lot shape? Like, yeah, okay, like...
It is, it's existing, so...
Existing as in, like, historically going back, or it's been subdivided?
No, it's existing historically going back.
But that, so that's one lot, four, and then there's lot five?
Yeah.
Okay. So that's been subdivided that way, and the other lot, that it's, whatever, which one is ever which, that it's on Fourth Avenue, is that correct? Like, the, you know, the piece, this right here?
Yeah.
1830 something? That's the other lot, right? This here?
No, it's just one lot that he's talking about, the one in the yellow.
Here, yeah, this lot, but it's, it's an odd shape.
Yes.
So is this a lot here? What is this here?
Yes, that's a separate lot, completely. No, yeah.
And, and then that was existing as in historically, is my question.
Yeah, that is, there's been no subdivision application, there's just a lot, similar to a lot of lots in Roslyn, one roll number, and the house covers two lots.
Right.
In this case, and this kind of answers the next question coming up, that, yes, 1834 Fourth, which is the adjacent one, used to own the funny little panhandle-shaped lot and Lot Five. She had one roll number, owned one lot. But anybody can come in at any time without the city knowing, and sell a portion of their, or a lot, if they have a lot to sell. It has its own pet, its property identification, it now has its own roll number, separates from Lot Five, so it is considered a completely separate lot, and there's nothing the city can do to stop that. It's buyer beware, really. If you can build a house according to the regulations, you can build a house on a teeny If you can build a house according to the regulations, you can build a house on a teeny little, even teenier than that, if you could. In this case, he requires a variance to build what she wants to build.
Is this part of, is this part of this lot here? Is this just this gray area here? That's a lot?
That's a totally separate lot.
And this is a different lot here?
Yes.
Okay. And it's, it's, um, it's empty. Excuse me. It's not built on.
Continue, Stacy, please.
Pardon me.
So, when it was split, well, it wasn't even split, there was no subdivision, it already exists. So, she can sell that lot, lot four and lot five, and she sold lot four. As for how B.C. assessment looks at it, that's their petticoat, not ours. When the property sale goes through, they look at it, see lot four is now going to that owner, and lot five is still over here. Well, you would think they would assess it differently, that's what they do. It's not the city job. And encroachments, again, if there's encroachments on the lot, then it's, it's a buyer beware, really. It's not the city's responsibility, there's no legal issues with that.
Hey, is that...
I think, and that answers all the questions.
Yeah, it goes back to Counselor Moore, was brought up the question, so you're...
No, no, that's good. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anything further? Counselor Bloom, you have any questions on...
Nope. All right.
Thank you. Anything further?
Are we not allowed to speak on this topic?
No, you're not. You have every opportunity at public input period. I sat and asked twice if anyone wished to address council at public input period. You all, and you, I think you've been here before. And you've also had the opportunity to become, to come as a delegation, should you wish?
Well, I'm here with my friend who lives in the other part about law, and we're concerned about what's going on there. And when he came in, I told him to address it. Like, he misunderstood, and said he just wanted to hear the information.
I asked the question if you wished to address council.
Oh, I do. Sorry, yeah, I do.
Thank you very much. All right, on the motion, all in favor? Four, four in favor, Counselor Bloom?
I'm in favor.
Motion's carried. Request for council decision, a development permit application for Red Mountain Village, Lot Two, Old West Way Planning Assistant. Is there a motion that the city issued a D.P. for the proposed four-plex on the property legally described as Lot Two, Section Ten, Plan Number NEP eighty-seven oh double nine? Subject to the conditions A, B, C, and D in our package, and I won't read them out, and I'm sure we're all aware of it. Move by Counselor Thatcher, second to by Counselor Spear. Discussion Counselor Thatcher.
Uh, see, I went and had a look at this too, and, uh, I was just curious, is the access to that going to be through Feltra's pro, uh, or is it gonna come up behind Red Mountain? Cause that, cause that lot is right on the corner of the paved road.
Yes. So, it's gonna come up from Feltra.
Okay.
Behind the...
Tennis course, yeah, okay. So, that other road behind, that's not...
Yeah, well, that was part of, I don't know if you remember, there was an O.P.P. amendment. Remove a road so that road could be paved, and that is the intention, that that road is going to be paved this year, so...
Except trying to get up through, behind Red Mountain Motel and then...
The road exists on papers, but not in reality right now.
There's a rough cut road in there now, but, yeah.
Uh, who seconded that? Sorry, Counselor Spear?
Um, you know, I'm, I'm fine with, I mean, I don't know if we, you know, I mean, the, the report kind of, um, alludes to maybe we want, you know, it needs more conditions, but, um, I, I don't know why we'd put more conditions on that. I mean, so there's no road there yet, right? And they're responsible to build the road? We responsible to build the road? City is?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
From a, I don't know, it's a long story from the talks.
Yes, I remember, yeah, okay.
I can go into it, but...
No, I understand. Um, yeah, no, I don't have anything else to say about it.
Counselor Moore?
Yeah, I do, and I, I'm concerned now that I was looking at the wrong, no, I was looking at the right one. Okay. So, um, the stream is running rather robustly right now. So, do we have any idea how long that stream runs?
Probably to the end of June.
To the end of June, okay. And then, like, I'm looking at the map, and you can see with the curve of the paved road, and that's, the, the stream runs right under a culvert that goes down there. And then, there's already, like, where they, the little flat part that you can see on the image, I'm on page eighty-one, if anyone wants to look, that drops off, and you can see the pins for the lot are, like, right in the middle of the stream, right? We talk about the bank that they're gonna be cutting back, they're gonna be cutting back the part that's still green, cause part of it's already been cut back, right? So, they're gonna be, they're going to be working quite a ways away from that stream anyway, right? Okay, cause one part of the report, it said that, um, silt screening and stuff would be required, and another place said, well, it would be, you'd put it up when you had storm conditions or something, and I'm thinking, like, if they do anything on that lot, it's gonna tumble right into the stream, right? Regardless whether there's a storm or not, and even when it's dry, whatever gets dumped in there is then gonna be washed down into the, into our water. Okay, so they're, they're required to put up silt fencing right from the start? Well, no, another place that said, there was, um...
Well, I read that.
Find it. I know, I thought it was, it was in two different places, right? And so, I was just, I just wanna make sure that that is what's gonna happen. Um, let me go back to what it said. It says, um, screenings and sedimentation controls will be in place where necessary to minimize off-site impacts, mainly due to stormwater runoff. So, I'm just thinking, as long as they are put there, that's good. Okay. And then, um, another thing. Okay. Okay, so, on the, the cut slope, there's a steep slope in there already, the part that's been cut, and then, so that's gonna trigger, like, our cut and fill bylaw for all that stuff. Okay. And you don't have any concerns about what might happen there? Okay, no, that's good.
Counselor Bloom?
Nope.
Counselor Spear?
Um, so just to follow up what Counselor Moore had, about the, you know, the, whatever we call that, silt fencing stuff, or whatever you put down, that fabric stuff. Does, um, is Sylvie Mouse involved with assessing that at all? Only, only on developments, right? That's required?
She, she could be, but stopped and said it would be necessary in most cases.
And, and, and if something went awry, would we rely on her to come and do that? And it would be our cost?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
This particular stream runs into a stormwater drain.
Yeah, yeah.
So, that's why it stopped and said it was necessary.
Yeah, and the culvert's outside of that, that lot proper, correct? The culvert comes beyond that lot line, right?
Culvert's right under.
It's dry.
No, I know under, but it's...
I mean, in the dirt under the...
No, no, I know that, but you see...
The culvert is in that lot.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Okay. Anything further?
Thank you.
Counselor Bloom, you're good? You set?
I'm doing good, thanks.
Okay, on the motion, all in favor?
In favor.
Motion's carried unanimously. A request for council decision on the twenty thirteen city rolls on annual report. Uh, just one sec, if we don't have anything further for Stacy, or maybe Stacy wishes. Well, unless you wanna stay and enjoy the rest of this duty. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stacy.
Uh, request for council decision, twenty thirteen annual report. Uh, resolved that council received the annual report, hold annual meeting to consider any submissions and questions from the public at a regular council meeting of July fourteenth, twenty fourteen. Is there a mover, Moore? Second to by Thatcher. I don't know if we have to discuss this?
I have a few comments. Um, Manny? Okay. Um, really good job to staff, thank you. And I think this is the kind of thing that should get, you know, I know it'll get posted to our website, hopefully linked through the online paper, so people can read. There are a lot of good staff achievements this year, I think that's great. Um, had a couple of things, like, when it talks about the strategic plan, the last item, number two, didn't mention that we started our new policy on application and reporting for groups, and I think we did pass that in two, twenty thirteen, didn't we? Didn't we?
The policy was, um...
Twenty thirteen? Well, yeah, but we passed it in twenty thirteen, it's something good we did. Um...
Did you want the annual report amended?
Well, I mean, if it's easy, it's online, you haven't published it anywhere, right? We know if we could just, we should get credit, get credit for stuff we've done, right? The, um, the policy about, uh, how groups apply for money, we passed that in twenty thirteen, to make it more consistent of how we were gonna do that.
Well, you know, we passed in twenty thirteen.
Yeah. The other thing I thought that we passed in twenty thirteen, and I could be wrong, was did we finish our mediate agreement for sewer service in twenty thirteen? Or was that twenty fourteen? Okay. Sorry about that. Um, and then strategic planning...
No, it's in the background. She has a bird, uh, you know, what do you call those things?
I know. Um, also in the strategic planning for funding infrastructure, that's page ninety-four, um, we could mention broadband collaboration with CBBC and CBT as ongoing, cause that certainly started in twenty thirteen. And I'm just curious, the staff training for Perry, did the same thing for twenty twelve and twenty thirteen? Was it exactly the same? You might wanna change a year on that. Um, and I had a question, it said we removed over thirty dangerous trees, and I'm just wondering where any trees replanted to replace them?
Your worship, the majority of those trees are cottonwoods?
Did we replace them with something that wasn't a cottonwood? Something that we would like to be green in our community? Okay. Okay.
Counselor Bloom?
Yeah?
I don't know, it's, uh, pretty noisy in the background there, so if you can kinda keep the noise in the background down a bit, cause it's coming through the speaker pretty hard here.
I have the gas, okay.
Okay, okay.
Must be, uh, I stepped outside a bit, sorry.
Okay. Don't do that again.
Ah, it was birds.
Okay.
Okay, just two other quick things. Um, on page one thirteen, it talks about water utility, and it mentions water restrictions. And I'm just curious, when was the last time we actually implemented water restrictions? I didn't think that we had since we've made meters mandatory, and I thought maybe that should be mentioned.
We have it.
The bylaw still speaks to water restrictions starting in June and all year.
Yeah, but we don't do, we don't, we don't actually, we have, we don't have to do it, we haven't had to do it anymore because, because of metering, right?
Well, the bylaw speaks to the fact that we have to do it.
But if we do need it, we still have the bylaw in place.
Yeah. Well, I guess, I mean, this is an annual report, this isn't a summary of bylaws, you could say that because of the other steps we've taken, we haven't had to do that, cause I think that's a credit to the city. Um, and then this is on recreation, the loss of the two gyms, and this is just a question, I'm just wondering, are we still looking at any other options, um, for gyms? Is there a possibility to rent the, you know, the J.W. building, or, I don't know, adapting part of the arena?
Your worship, we're still under discussions with different...
That's kind of outside the annual report.
It is, but you know what? When do we ever get to talk about these things if we don't, you know, have them come up? Anyway, that's it, otherwise I thought it was great. Thank you very much to staff for that.
Any further discussion, Counselor Bloom, on the annual report?
No. All right.
Counselor Spear?
I'm sorry. Yeah, just on the landscaping, on page one, one hundred and eleven, um...
Please hang up and try your call again. If you'd like assistance.
So, where it says landscaping, spring preparation, planting equals eight weeks of work, summer weeding and deadheading requires three days per week, fall... Is that all still relevant with our new downtown core in the landscaping? Like, that's still factual? Okay. Thank you. And I also had, uh, the question about trees, and as far as cottonwoods go, I've had this, like, the, the, uh, pre-business people down at my place looking to cut those things down, cause they are bad weed, but it would be interesting to know where those were taken out. Um, I'm just a little curious about where those have been taken out, and I did write, are they replaced? So, yeah, I'm sure we can find that out.
Sure we can find that out.
Yeah. Um, the other thing that I just noted that should probably, and this is just nitpicky, but it's still, one twelve, um, where it says, public works yard and building, and then it's got no comma, and it says Ross and Public Library, no comma, Ross and Arena? Uh, kind of just all, it's, it doesn't work, so either put commas there or move Ross and Library down and Ross and Arena down, so that, cause they're not related. You know what I mean? Cause then it's got Ross and Museum and Ross and House, and you're trying to say it's Facebook comments. Um, and I have some other notes here, uh, but I think that was all that I wanted.
Counselor Bloom, you have, do you have anything on the, uh, annual report?
Nope, I don't.
Okay, on...
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I just also, um, noted also what Counselor Moore, you know, had said about the gym thing, and that is for further discussion, but we must not let that, um, lay low, cause it's a dilemma for our community right now, the whole issue around recreation and gyms, and, and the fact that we had to, they clearly say in the, say in the report that we had to cancel gymnastics programs and recreation programs in our community because of this political move, and you know me, I'll always speak to that. Um, it, it's not, it's not satisfactory for our community, and, and we, and we need to address it.
Okay, thank you. Back to the annual report.
That is the annual report.
On the motion, all in favor? Four in favor, Counselor Bloom?
I'm in favor.
Motion's carried. Seven, seven E. Council pursue, uh, this is our motion, council pursue the Section forty-one-one of the Local Government Act. Excuse me, appoint Miss Butler as the chief elections officer, and that Ms. Cynthia Nuevo will be appointed deputy chief election officer twenty fourteen local election. Is there a mover to that? Excuse me, move by Moore. Second to by...
Bloom?
Bloom?
Do you want me to second? Okay.
Thank you. Counselor Moore?
Okay. Um, I think it makes sense to have Ms. Butler and Cynthia be our election officer roles, I think that makes good sense. Um, I have some questions about, uh, you know, the budget, how the budget is, is set up, right? What, I'd like to see an actual plan of how that money is spent. Uh, I don't know how many people will be hired to work, um, the polls, who you hire to work the polls, you know, do you go to citizens, you know, all of that? Um, and just curious as to what other expenses go into that? You know, I mean, I suppose it's printing ballots and renting voting booths, and I don't know what else.
Miss Butler?
May you staff get into that?
Your worship, um, the majority of it is advertising, there's a lot of money spent on advertising for an election. Um, we usually have nine people work from the polls.
Do you advertise for those positions?
It's usually dealt with staff. If we don't have enough staff, then we'll go out to the public.
Okay. I mean, I would suggest that we should go out to the public with that, if we're, I mean, these are, cause we're paying people their salaries, right? To do their regular jobs, and then...
They usually just bank the time.
Bank the time, yeah. It would be nice to give some people in the community the opportunity to look at those positions.
Move in, Miss Butler?
If council would like me not to use city staff, then I will need a resolution, cause that's been our historical, what we've done. We don't need a lot of people.
That is the key, they need some experience to do this, and whatever, I don't know, who in the public has experience? Maybe there's a whole bunch of people, I don't know. But I, we'll hope that we get through this resolution first, and that's appointing two people, okay? Counselor Bloom?
Uh, just to that last bit, it sounds like that would be more expensive ultimately, wouldn't it? But, um, I don't know. Anyway, the resolution as it stands, no comment, I guess, it's a vote.
Okay. So, on the...
Oh, I had another question.
On, okay.
Okay. Um, I'm really interested about that the city is responsible for conducting the school board trustee election. Do we get some money from the school board to do that?
Your worship, that's a reciprocal agreement, where we get the facility for free.
Ah.
Anything further?
Uh... Uh, sorry, could I, could you just, uh, clarify that a little bit further? It's a reciprocal agreement?
Your worship, we run the election for them, and they let us use one of their facilities for free for the day.
Why can't we use one of our own facilities?
Worship, the only place we have is the Miners Hall, and that has an accessibility issue.
I see. As in wheelchair access and stuff, or don't we have all that?
First senior's not for parking.
Parking.
So, what do we use of theirs?
Um, your worship, we're right now, we used to use the Ana, but right now, we're looking at using the RSS cafeteria and turnway, and, yeah, for sure.
Okay. On the motion, all in favor? Four in favor, Counselor Bloom? Counselor, you there?
In favor, yeah.
Thank you. Motion's carried.
Okay, then I had a question about the, um, bylaw that was, that was attached, I know this was the two thousand and eight one. And, so, I'm curious how it differed from the twenty eleven one, cause we've had a more recent one. And then I'm also curious about when we'll be discussing this, cause I guess we often do one for twenty fourteen, right?
Not if it's in a change.
Okay. So, um, I, that, okay. So, then we'd have, cause we're not approving that tonight, right? That wasn't part of, the thing we just approved was just appointing the two of you.
That's correct.
As that, so...
And I'm not suggesting any changes.
Okay, but we don't have a motion to...
We already have a bylaw in place.
Oh, twenty-four seventy.
We do have a bylaw, under bylaw, number ten A, the procedures bylaw for twenty fourteen?
Right, but that's not the appointment in the remuneration, you can never say that word.
No, and that, the reason that's not on is we don't, are not predicting any changes to that bylaw.
Okay. Okay. I have a few questions, because I'm just curious, a curious sort of person. So are elections preparations done during regular business hours? Or, I mean, I know the polls are open later than regular, but is the preparation for the election done during regular business hours, or...
Because we don't have enough time to do it during regular business hours.
Okay, so you do it after hours?
For the facility.
Okay. Okay. And then I'm just curious how the pay rate has been determined and...
Your worship, if you look at the civic info rates, based on what is offered in this area and other municipalities of our rate, it's about, it's in the median. Fruitvale, they pay by the hour at $31.88 an hour. Grand Forks is $2,000 for the chief election officer. Ross and $1,000. Cascard $800. Trail is $1,250. Regional District is $1,800. So it's just a median.
Okay. Okay. Let's see. Okay, so then for the day, these election officials, who are actually our staff, they bank the time...
You can bank it, or you can have it paid.
Bank it or pay it. Bank it or pay it, okay. But they're still getting their...
They bank it at regular time.
They're getting their regular pay for the day, and then they're getting this as extra? Is that, because they're not taking a holiday day to do the election? Well, no, it's Saturday. It's Saturday. You're right. Sorry, Saturday. Okay, that's okay. Um, oh, and then I was just curious, you know, that we pay an election official 30 bucks an hour while a ballot counter gets 12. And I'm just wondering what sort of extra training goes into the election officials that the ballot counters don't get. I mean, that's quite a difference in pay, right?
Your worship, the election officials are there for the whole day. The ballot counters are only there for the hours of counting ballots.
Right. So they're both being paid at a...
So maybe they only be there for maybe two hours.
Okay. That doesn't explain to me why they get a different hourly rate, though.
What's, I don't, I don't understand.
Well, I'm just trying to understand.
One hourly, I'm confused by the question.
Yeah, I don't get it.
Because there was, let's see, there was a extra hours for the, oh, I'm sorry, it was for the advance voting. The advance voting said that people get 30 an hour plus meals, right? Which is higher than the 250 that they get on the regular election day. It just, there's just inconsistencies, right? I guess that's what I'm trying to get at. I like things to be consistent, right? So if you're an election official on election day, you get $250. If you're working the, if you're working the advance voting, which is the two days, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, you get $30 an hour plus meals. So it's just, you know, it's just different, and it seems like it's the same work.
Your worship, the, what happens on the advance poll is Cynthia and I will work those as our normal eight-hour day because they're on a Wednesday, including that four hours. So that's what happens. We don't staff them with anybody else except for Cynthia and I.
Okay. So you get your regular, your regular salary, and then you get this extra money for the advance?
No, we get, we get the thousand and the whatever Cynthia's...
Okay, so you don't get an hourly amount for doing that? Okay, okay, okay. See, we're doing something every day.
Well, I'd like to stay on the agenda. It would help me out a little bit.
We are staying on the agenda.
I know, but if you need those, no, we aren't. If you need those questions answered, I think you can ask them. I mean, if you want to make a motion to...
No, I just wanted to understand.
No, I know, but I'm just saying that that's information that any of us could ask the staff and get answers to that at any time rather than a regular meeting, right?
I thought I wasn't encouraged to ask questions outside of council meeting, because then not everybody gets the benefit of the answers. Not that they all want them.
Counselor, please.
Okay.
Moving right along. Information items, or a motion to receive the information items and act on resolutions contained within, is the remover to that. Moved by Moore, seconded by Spear. Discussion, Counselor Moore.
I have A and C.
Counselor Blumey, do you have any information items you wish to bring up?
No, but I will have to ask to be excused. Do we still have quorum if I...
Yes.
Okay. So pardon me.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Bye. A and, sorry, C is that?
A and C.
I have B.
I have B also. I'd like to just quickly, D and E.
Counselor Moore, D, or A, sorry.
A, okay. A is the compass. I had a, I wanted to talk about the June 11th one, when they talk about attention councils and boards, response sought to building code and community charter changes. And I find this rather interesting, that the province is considering removing the concurrent authority for the building code, making a universal code applicable to all municipalities, to the whole province. And they're asking, UBCM is asking for our response. This is going to eliminate the ability of municipalities to make their own rules and regulations. And the example that was given, I thought, was pretty meaningful, because it was Kelowna, after their big wildfires, put in a regulation that you could not have shake shingles because of the fire hazard. Well, under this new thing, if they go to a universal code, they wouldn't have the ability to do that unless it was applicable to the whole province. So it takes away individual municipalities' ability to formulate legislation that suits their own needs. So I'm not sure that we should support that. Now, on the other hand, I think municipalities should be able to demonstrate and articulate a specific reason why they want their bylaw to be different than the provincial. And if they can't do that, then it should be, the default should be the provincial code unless there's a specific reason, right? And for example, we have a more strict sprinkler by law. But I've asked a little bit, and no one seems to be able to tell me why that is so. So to me, if there's no compelling reason for that, we should revert to whatever the provincial level is, because then that makes it easier for people who want to, you know, create new businesses in our community. So, and in our staff briefing, that was, well, two weeks ago, we added the building code as one thing that staff had agreed they were going to be looking at, because it's been an issue that Perry, I guess, has brought up, that we need some analysis and modernization of our code. So that's good, but now that the, now that UBCM is asking for this input, I was thinking, oh, yeah, we can do that in the winter, whenever staff has time. But now I'm thinking, maybe we need to have our building inspector bump that up a priority just a little bit and provide council with a bullet list of how our building code differs. And I don't think there's too many ways it does, and so hopefully this wouldn't be a big commitment. But where our building code differs from the provincial, and if there's a rationale why that is so, because that would inform our response to the province about what they're talking about doing, making this a universal, universal thing. Anyway.
What's the deadline?
Ah, you know what? I don't know that they gave a deadline. Oh, and I'm not connected to the internet, so I can't look. Is anybody connected to the internet?
Anyway, maybe stop and play that.
Well, I mean...
If you want to. Anyway, so I was going to make a motion that staff be directed to create a list of how and why our building code differs from the provincial building code, and include recommend, the staff recommendations, if they think we ought to change it or keep it the same, or, you know, what our position is, because that would help us decide if we need to support.
Are you making that motion?
Yeah. So the motion is that staff be directed to create a list of how and why our building code differs from the provincial code, and include staff recommendations for changes.
Seconded by Spear. Discussion.
I think I've already talked about it.
Counselor?
I guess I, well, I always, I wonder about timing. We're moving into the busy time of year, the building time of year, and I would imagine that Perry would be out and about a fair bit. But if it is unmanageable, maybe we need to set a, like, that's why I wanted to know when is this, you know, input date-wise, right? When is it, the due date or whatever? Because that may impact when we would need to do that by, is what I'm trying to say.
I'm happy to have staff come back to us with, with that information or Perry's schedule or whatever, right? But I just think it's important to move forward.
Well, okay, but then maybe you should have made that motion rather than the one that's made, okay? Because the motion was to toss staff without, right? That was the motion.
Well, I can add to it.
Or you can amend it.
Yeah, okay. Well, and, I don't know, let's see.
Read it out again.
That staff be directed to create a list of how and why our building code differs from the provincial building code, and include staff recommendations for changes. And further, that staff respond to council with an appropriate timeline for doing this or something. How about that? Tracy, you're good at fixing the words up. Make it sound right. So where's...
Cool. Just a sec, please, Tracy.
Your worship, this is one of the busiest buildings we've had, and I would suggest that Perry's not going to be able to get to this until late fall. I don't know how detailed it is, but I will talk, we have an old memo for you to fill.
Or if you could just hit the high points, just so we know if there's any big issues, right? Because he probably knows off the top of his head where the real differences are, because...
Then we could have done that simply by, instead of making the motion, we could have simply done that by asking Perry if he can give us a brief description on that, rather than the hows and whys and all of that, because that's rather detailed, and I don't know that it's, has enough direction given to it that it can be done in a reasonable time. So let me just deal with this motion and then, all right? Okay, so on the motion, all in favor. Opposed, motion is defeated. No, I think what we can do is we can ask Perry if he can pay attention to this UBCM thing here and give us a bit of a recap on it.
Memo. Well, just a recap of how our code differs from the provincial.
Right, and we can, we can do it quite simply, I think, rather than through a motion.
Yeah, okay. I mean, actually, that's, that's basically what I was saying, but if you don't like the way I say it, we can say it any way you like.
No, no, I don't.
The intent is the same.
But when you, when you craft a motion that's that detailed, then it's, right? And then you say, well, you just want to hit the high points or whatever. Well, then let's just do that, and let's not make a motion that makes it a little bit crazy. So are you making a motion?
No.
Or you want to talk on UBCM?
Yeah, I just want to say that I think it's important that, you know, staff, when things like this do flow through, that they are, you know, it's like a little flag, and this is your department, and you need to pay attention to it. And without, you know, having motions from council. So anything, just building code or whatever, then Perry, you know, it should be, it should be brought to his attention, however that process works in-house, and he does that.
But a simple question?
It doesn't have to be a big detailed thing. I think that's Counselor Moore's intention.
I wasn't asking for a big detailed thing, but the thing is, this could be something significant, guys. We don't know.
But we don't even know right now.
And that's what I'm saying.
We don't even know, I'm sorry. We don't even know right now, Counselor Spear said that Perry may be aware, he's probably aware of it already. So we don't know. So why don't we ask the question first before we get a report? Okay, thank you.
Okay, so you don't make a motion, now staff will just take this and...
Well, we'll get an update from Perry.
Okay.
Any more on A? B.
Okay, I brought that up. I just thought the whole piece run kind of concept, this has never come by us, I don't think, you know, the time I've been here.
Yeah.
Has it, this piece run?
Yeah, I did it two years ago.
You did the piece run?
Mm-hmm.
Did we have it come through Ross and?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, really? I'm not, sorry.
Really? I have photos and...
Well, could you give us a little, like, insight to what went on?
Well, did you, the...
I read everything, yeah.
Well, that's what goes on. They came to City Hall, and I greeted them, and we, I introduced them to around City Hall, and they said, "Thank you very much," took some pictures, and they ran away.
Oh, but we didn't engage, we didn't run, and we didn't engage the community, right? Because that's why I don't remember. But you did, yeah.
I could have met them out at Nancy Green and ran in with them, but I think that day I was not feeling fit.
But this year you are, right?
No, I'm not, but that's my question.
Yeah. Okay, well, I just want...
Always prepared to meet these...
Are we going to do that? That's why I brought it up.
Someone wishes to do it.
Oh. I'm out of town. July 4th, yeah, it's not a good day for me either. Anyway, I like the concept, I think it's really, and so if we don't, we don't, we answer negative to them, they just bypass us.
No, they come this way.
Oh, they come this way, but they just go through.
Because they go to Trail, right?
Right, okay.
And just don't stop.
All right.
So, no one wants to, no one has the time. You're out of town.
I'm out of town.
What day, it's July 4th, which is what day?
Oh, I guess you're out of town. It's July 4th.
I am always out of town, the end of June until the beginning of July.
What day is July 4th?
It's a Thursday, I think, or Thursday or Friday.
Okay, I'm going to think about it. I mean...
And I'll think about it, too. I need to know.
I'm going to think about it.
I need to know a question, but it's...
It's Friday, I'm working on it.
It's Friday, okay. Uh, so we need to know their seat.
See, with me, I think it's really interesting that there's a lot of expanded usage now for the gas tax funds, and many of the projects that we've been talking about, broadband, transit, drinking water, wastewater, roads, bridges, airports, seaports, everything, you know, not that we've been talking about airports and seaports, but can be, are eligible for this funding now, so it's actually, it's actually pretty cool. And there's also the new stuff about the capacity building to help local governments in long-term planning, and like, and they specifically mentioned asset management, which I know we have been doing some with, we've been doing, you know, some of that, but we kind of got stopped. So I think that's, it's great that that's pretty flexible, and I'm sure we can use it to good.
As we are doing now.
Well, we're not really using it much now. We can use it more.
Okay, anything more on that? Gas tax? D, Counselor?
That's me. I'm having, I'm sorry, I apologize. I'm having a bit of a hard time on my computer tonight for some reason.
Meeting, less meeting...
Okay, meetings at UBCM. Okay, last year, no, I didn't go last year. Oh, I can't remember. No. Did I get there last year? No, I didn't because of the...
Maybe you did.
Anyways, anyway, we haven't met with ministers for some time, and I think we all need to think and have a conversation about, are there things that we do need to sit down? I mean, I would love to sit down with Christie Clark, just to sit down with Christie Clark. No, we can frame it in a way around, I mean, there's always the education issue in here, I mean, as far as school closing and all that. But are there things that we need to talk about? Like, does staff need to say to us, we need to have, you know, conversations with some of these ministers?
What was the deadline? Sorry to interrupt.
I think it's important that we really think about it and maybe...
I guess I could have looked it up myself.
Put out some ideas. Anyway, I just wanted to bring it up, that I think we, we mustn't be complacent when we've got an opportunity to meet with ministers.
Request forms are available Monday, June 16th, that's all it says. Doesn't say a deadline.
Okay, well, is that online? The request forms online?
Yeah.
Okay, let's pull them up for anyone, send an email out to when the deadline is and get everybody's...
Okay, yeah, I appreciate that. Okay.
So the same goes...
Can you just keep us tuned to that, please?
Yeah, so the same, yeah, same goes for E then?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. We're all good, so on the motion, all in favor. Opposed, motion's carried. Bylaws. Bylaw 2572, local government election procedure bylaw, deputy chief administrator, resolve that. Council reads bylaw 2572, local government election procedure bylaw 2014 for first, second, and third times, remover.
Oh, my God.
Moved by Counselor Thatcher, seconded by Counselors Moore. Discussion, Counselor Thatcher. Further discussion? All in favor? Motion's carried. Members' reports. Counselor Spear.
Oh, I keep on... Okay, I don't have a lot. Chamber of Commerce meeting, I was there for part of it only, because I had to go to another event. Anyway, you know, they've, you know, the chamber, just general comment, couple comments, they're really, you know, brainstorming ways to try and engage more businesses to, obviously, to increase their revenue. You know, they've relied on their, what's it called? I was going to say escape, but sorry, that's the other one. On their vacation guide for all of their revenue, pretty much. And there's been, been a little bit of, another guide was created with no intention, I don't a little bit of, um, another guide was created with no intention, I don't think, of, um, taking away, you know, um, businesses that, that advertised in the vacation guide, but this other guide out by Tourism Rossum, I guess it's free to advertise or something, it's created a little bit of a problem, um, with the revenue of the vacation guide for, um, for the, for the Chamber of Commerce, and they're really, really relying on it, they only rely on members' fees, the guide, and fundraising, and they realize that they're gonna have to do more fundraising, um, if, you know, if the, the vacation guide doesn't produce as much revenue as they need or would hope for. So, um, they had some loss of income from the hub that, where they were in the, up in the Bank of Montreal, they were actually supposed to, the chamber was supposed to gain $900, um, per month from the hub as revenue, so that's gone because that went, the hub didn't, doesn't exist. Uh, the chamber's still a little bit homeless, um, well, a lot homeless, and, um, I appreciate that they're trying to just hold their meetings wherever they can, but they, they are still looking for a home. Um, I didn't get to listen to anything about any potential homes from them because I had to leave to go to the next, um, meeting. Um, but, you know, I'm confident in, you know, the two executive directors that are sharing the load, um, they're really trying to be innovative and, and come up with some new ideas for fundraising, and they're well aware of council's, um, you know, position on them stepping up to, to try and raise and generate more revenue. It's not an easy task in Rossum, um, but they're working on it.
Are they discussing ways to provide more value to their membership? I mean, fundraising has got, raised money, but you raise more money if you provide more value through your organization, to your members.
Well, I think, to be honest, historically, um, I think that, you know, you know, no, I, I wasn't there for that conversation about creating more value, but I think there's lots of value, I mean, you know, in their reports, you know, they, there's all kinds of things for businesses that are win-win if you're a business and you buy into a membership. Um, I think people, you know, some businesses just choose not to support the chamber for whatever, you know, the reasons are, they want to pay the fee, or, I don't know, maybe they've got, you know, some other reasons, I don't know what those are. Um, but anyway, uh, I finally got to that meeting. And then the other thing that I did, and Counselor Moore was also there, was I was invited to present scholarship that, um, the city so generously, um, came up with, um, for the first graduates of, um, the Seven Summits Learning Center, and there were two, and it was, it was, it was a really neat event, right? Like, it was two graduates, there's, you know, over thirty kids, uh, you know, and growing, um, at the learning center, and just to hear their stories of the first year, um, and how they really pulled that all off, it's really, really remarkable. And I feel proud because, of course, I was on the neighborhood of learning committee, which didn't lead us to the outcome that we wanted, um, in our community, but did this public school, self-designed school has filled that gap. So it was, it was a nice event. Um, I've had inquiries about speed bump on Thompson Avenue, and I wonder if this is permanent due to the nature of the water flow and the way that that was built, and my take on it, it is permanent, but is it gonna take it down in winter?
Well, I'll say...
You've driven over it, obviously.
Yeah, the reason is there is for a water bar, so when the water runs down the highway, it doesn't, or down the asphalt and gets to the gravel, it doesn't wash all the gravel out. That's the first reason it's there, is a water bar.
I see. That's where, because of the gravel, okay.
Yeah, the second reason probably is to slow people down so they're not going through the gravel three hundred miles an hour.
Right.
Is it permanent? No.
Okay, thank you. And the other, thanks for that, um, and, cause you know how many times I drive down. Um, so, um, oh, I, when I looked, uh, read over again the, um, the annual report, um, the end of the year report, and, you know, some of the timelines for fixing things with regards to roads, I'm just wondering, there's patches that need to be repaired around town, and I wonder if those will be done in the next, you know, like that gravel place there, I mean, there's spots everywhere where gravel...
I'm sure it's a question of getting the pavers in, right? And getting them to do them all at once rather than come back to...
So they just come in one fell swoop, right?
Well, that's what you hope for, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um, and I don't know, Stacy's gone, but I had another question, what's happening with the natural playground that's supposed to go in at RSS, or has that moved forward at all?
Uh, we had a report, I can't remember. Go ahead.
Worship, um, council supported that and the two, Rachel Lucine and, can't remember the other...
Kaylee.
Kaylee?
Kaylee was involved in Michigan.
Yeah, they were going to now go to CBT and see if they can get a grant.
No, 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 not for the, not for the wetlands, they said, you know, the natural playground with rocks and all that, yeah.
The ability report was supposed to come to us.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's...
It sort of dropped away, I just wondered. So can you just note that I asked that question? Thanks. And the only other thing which, you know, I'm just, you know, the boulevards and the sightlines of grasses, I know that the staff are getting around to those, but there's a few that are really bad right now, down in my area particularly. Um, really tall grass, really hard to see pulling out, and it, it just concerns me.
Go ahead, Drew.
If council has those types of concerns, can you please send a minute email address to Darren?
You got it. Done. Thank you, that's me.
Counselor Thatcher. Uh, I was day shift for that gate, last Gateway meeting, so I, I can't, no report on that. I did have a concern, a citizen asked me today about sightlines, you know, it was on Davis and Leroy. I guess there's been a couple, a close call there. The trees that are on that, on that corner there, I'm not sure if the city trees are , uh, private property, but I guess, you know, people walking down Leroy and people cutting the corner, you know, turning the corner up, up on Davis off Leroy.
They need a sidewalk.
And it's, uh, I guess there's been a, there was a close call, and, uh, I guess, you know, if you're driving up and you can't see, and you're walking down and you can't see anything coming up, so.
Okay, anyway...
The person asked me to face sense. Other than that, I don't have anything else to report.
Okay, I'll just jump in the Gateway. The next meeting is, I don't have it handy, but anyway, it's a committee that's been struck to become the fundraising committee. So, there's no more to say than the Gateway. The Gateway people themselves are, have, are at the end of the, end of the line, the Gateway project, that committee is, is gone, and the next committee now is a fundraising committee. That will be established, and I, I think it's July 15th, but don't quote me on that. So anyway, report more on that later. Tracy, that seniors letter, can you just, I forgot to write it down.
Oh, worship, the, um, Rossum seniors are applying for a New Horizons grant, and they just asked for a letter of support, um, that stipulates that the city is in full agreement that it will remain a senior center for the next five years. Well, I typed up a letter of support stating that.
Yeah, we're sending...
They're applying for the grant, they'd like to remove the wall that divides the two rooms, so they have a bigger, open concept.
Okay, the other thing, I was at, well, my favorite subject now is the regional district, apparently, uh, the East End Services Committee, uh, the report from the fire chief was presented, and I put it in the information package, if you had a chance to read it. The major recommendation in that report is to hire four more, four more people, that will result in an increase of about $800,000 to the fire service. So I, uh, I whined pretty long and hard at that meeting, and I requested that, uh, staff at East End Service present the report to the East End Service Committee that, uh, shows where regional fire service fits in relationship to other municipalities our size. And I was told at that meeting that, that is very hard to do, and I said, "Well, it might be hard to do, but we need to do it." So I'm expecting that report for the meeting in, I think it's July 3rd, or July 1st, I think. That report, also, uh, at that meeting, oh, I've got the minutes here. Anyway, the big one is, is the, uh, is the report from the fire chief and his committee, and the recommendations to hire four more people. Oh, and build a training center, two and a half a million. So you're all aware of that.
In Trail?
Yeah.
The training center for firefighters?
Yeah. Full-time training officer is 150, uh, probationary fire, two probationary firefighters are 70 each, and then after the probation period, they're 100 each, so, and a fire prevention officer, which is 130. So when you get to the end of the day, it's around 800. So, and my next regional meeting is Thursday, a sub-board meeting, that was in Trail. I'm missing something, cause I lost my, my computer thing went down again, and I lost all my notes, so I'm missing some. So I'll, I'll just go to Counselor Moore, if I remember, then I'll come back to me. Go ahead.
Okay, um, I presented the city of Rossum bursary for the Kootenai Columbia Learning Center, and that was, it was really inspirational to see those kids, these kids really turned their lives around, right? So it's, I was, I liked going down, it was a very moving ceremony, they did a great job, and I'm really glad that we support it. Um, I did attend the Seven Summits grad, uh, which was a lovely event with Counselor Spearon. The other thing that's interesting to note is they do have a growing program, they've already outgrown their space, they had to turn away four applicants this year, and they were really heartbroken to have to do that. Um, I have a question, and it's just, when are we going to consider the accord that was presented by the Women Creating Change that was at our June 9th meeting, that's supposed to, thought that would come back to us for this meeting? Um, I think that's probably a simple, just sort of, support for their initiative, you know...
This agenda is pretty long, so...
Oh, yeah, but I mean, that's a...
Could be why we left it up.
Okay, could be, no, I'm sure there was a good reason for it, but I'm just curious when it will come, cause usually when a delegation comes, we get back to them within two weeks. So, we'll be on the next, next one?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then I wanted to suggest that the committee that was struck to implement the Auditor General's recommendations meet in July, I was gonna set the date tonight, cause I can't get Kerry to answer my emails, but I can't set it tonight, I either, I'm coordinating that with Lois, so, anyway, I'll just keep trying. Um, I attended a meeting in Casa Gar with the seniors advocate, Isabel McKenzie, she's new to the position, and she seems quite caring and interested in rural issues, but I have no idea how effective she'll be, so that was something. Uh, attended the Sustainability Commission meeting, and the group approved a communications plan via email, it's a very small budget, it was part of the plan, it was already approved by council when we approved their overall thing. Um, couple of updates, the Energy Task Force reported that Fortis has pulled back on conservation efforts like the Energy Diet for this year, but the good news is they've renewed their commitment for the new budget for next year, and very positive. Um, Energy Diet III will be, have a more regional focus, and that's in keeping with CBT's broader focus of regional collaboration, and I think they're doing that to hope to partner with CBT as well as Fortis. Um, there was some talk about carbon reduction goals, because we are a signatory to the Climate Action Charter, and most municipalities have found it very difficult to be carbon neutral by 2012, and we are among them. Um, the Task Force is working with staff on some recommendations for how maybe some of the gas tax money could be, um, put towards those initiatives, and they will bring recommendations to council in the near future. Innovative education, the Task Force now the Monashie Institute, they've had, they have seven courses lined up. Um, I understand their goat-making workshop this past weekend was successful.
Goat making?
Not goat making, goat cheese making.
I just said that so that you would know I'm listening.
I'm glad to hear you're listening, I sometimes doubt, and I'm very glad to hear you're listening. Um, and they are hoping to be launched as a separate entity soon, they have a marketing plan, a website, a coordinator, and they're doing well in the early days. Um, Economic Development Task Force, well, just, they talked about the nonprofit night, um, they are going to ask for feedback from Deanne Stevens, get, um, feedback from the participants to see how they can approve to do another, another event sometime. And they also talked about idea of a food truck in town serving delicious tacos, so we'll hope to see that. Um, okay, the LCCDT, uh, the Monashie Institute presented, RDI presented, and they talked about, um, the lands inventory that was mentioned here by the LCIC, and, and these guys tonight didn't talk about it too much, but it's really a cool thing, and evidently each municipality gets its own report, I don't know if we've gotten it yet, that they, they do, it's a mapping thing where they identify all the investment lands in every municipality and in the area, and there's all kinds of information you can get on it, it's, that's pretty cool. I was gonna tell you...
It's very similar to most provincial government mapping sites that you can go on, and you can pull up zoning, the same as ours, you can pull up zoning, you can pull up all those things, it's not, uh, it's nothing new, but it's a, uh, pulling up a whole bunch of information together, that's what it's doing.
Right, right, which is really helpful for people when they're looking for information, to have it all in one place, although, I have to say, it looked kind of complicated to use when you get on that site and try and go, cause they have all these different layers. But anyway, um, let's see, Terry always already talked about the special award that they got for their work West Kootenai, uh, and we already heard about that, so I'm gonna mention that. I also attended the grand opening of the new Skills Center, because it was right after the LCCDT meeting, and they're on the Esplanade and Trail, they have a really nice, uh, new space. Um, and I attended a casual gathering on June 11th that was organized by The Telegraph, which I would encourage any council to go, counselor to go to if they do another one, cause it was really, it was really very fun. The, the topic of this one was how the community could better engage with local government, um, there were some great ideas kicked around, and, and it was a fun evening. Um, and some of the things that came out was how to improve committee contribution and participant satisfaction of being on a committee of council, how to get more involved in social media, electronic bulletin board, you know, and make it fun, that kind of thing. Um, and they also discussed the need for higher compensation for counselors, um, because this would allow people to run and serve who has some, who have some job flexibility, like, cause there's a lot of people in the Kootenais who work two or three smaller jobs, and one of the points that came out was, somebody said, "Well, if I could make a little bit more money as a counselor, that would enable me to drop one of these other contracts that I have," so I could, and these are some of the younger people, right? And actually, the conversation changed my thinking about it, because I thought, there's no way you can change counselor compensation to make this a job that somebody could do as a, as a real job, but listening to the people talk about it at this meeting, I thought, you know, actually, that makes a lot of sense, because people do have to have a variety of jobs if they're in the working world to make ends meet, and this could be one of several they do. So I told them that there was a report coming to council, um, and so now my question to staff is, is that's, that's still on the list, right?
Yes, it's coming to council.
Do we know when?
No, exactly.
Do we know approximately? Like a month?
Uh...
In August?
Yeah.
Okay, August, that's good, just so people ask, I can say August. Um, I also attended the BC Rural Summit, I put my notes in the packet, but I think it's in this week's, um, thing, just a couple of highlights that came out over and over again in different meetings by different people, was the need to collaborate, and one interesting stat that was, uh, given was that a government, government in BC does not need to win a riding east of Chilliwack or north of the Sunshine Coast to govern BC, right? So all the rest of us are basically completely inconsequential unless we combine together and make our voices heard in ways, um...
You didn't discuss the federal situation, did you?
No, they didn't discuss the federal situation, I know. So then also there was a lot of talk about, um, need to, to regionalize, and this, this kind of goes the other way here, on the one hand, they're saying, "Okay, everybody unite to make our voice that's heard in Victoria," then they're also saying the one-size-fits-all legislation that comes out of Victoria doesn't necessarily work for us, as we've seen with school funding and things like that. So, it was, it was quite interesting, actually, there were some, there were some good speakers, um, and then the other thing, many sessions, different sessions talking about different things, were all emphasizing the need for broadband for economic development and future sustainability, especially out here in the rural areas. There was a great session on amenity migrants, and I'll let you read about it if you want,